Time is six thirty. I will call to order the Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three edition of the Committee of the Whole. We'll start with the roll call.
Michael Murray. Richard Eriksen.
Present.
John Lynn.
Here.
Sean Zabinski.
Here.
Mitch O'Gale.
Here.
Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Fader.
Here.
Dean Peters.
Here.
Did you get one? No, I don't think you actually have any.
Adam Viegus.
Here.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right. All right, we'll move on to the Approval of the Minutes section of the agenda. We have Agenda Item One, Approval of Minutes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve with one addition, under Housing Assessment Presentation, the second line from the bottom. Several questions and a lengthy, insert the word, discussion.
You have our chairman.
If I may, I just wanted to also, other than Kiefer brought up, it might be a little confusing going back in the minutes. So, under the City Clerk, how a monthly report works as changing the word "back" into the word "up" instead of, so it looks like we're moving, we're moving the dates up and not back. We could change that also in motion.
Richard, you good with that?
Yeah.
Mitch, you good with that? All right, I have a motion by Richard and a second by Mitch to approve the minutes with the change of adding the word "discussion" and then the change of changing the word "back" with "up" for the dates. Correct. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Report section of the agenda, we have the City Clerk with Agenda Item Two, City Clerk Monthly Report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things. The clerk's offices are fairly busy with their end of the month, another quarter, end of the year reporting. Just got out the ten ninety-five C forms and working on ten ninety-fours, which are the healthcare coverage forms that are required by law to send out by certain dates. Our new deputy clerk is working out really, really well. She has been a blessing to have in the office. And she's been doing a ton of training. She's got her Whistville training, so she's all ready to help with the February election. And that being said, there is going to be an election on February twenty-first. The city does not have any contests on this particular ballot, so it's going to be likely a fairly small turnout. There's only one contest on the whole ballot, and that's for the Justice of the Supreme Court. So, there are four candidates on that ballot, and everyone in the city will have the same ballot. So, if one ballot's out, it'll be a fairly small election. So, it'll be good for our new clerk to get her heat wet at that. We do have until January thirty-first to send out absentee ballots, but we don't have the ballots yet. So, once they come, we will make sure they get out as soon as possible. And then, again, we kind of touched on it with the last Agenda item with the minutes, but reminder that the Committee of the Whole and the council meetings are going to be moved up a week to February thirteenth and February fourteenth. City Hall's going to be closed on that Monday. That's a holiday for the City Hall and for the Police Department offices. But the clerks will be here behind closed doors getting everything ready for the next day. So, just kind of a heads up to all of the council members that because of the real short timeframe, there may be less reports as far as reports that require a lot of data to consolidate before the meeting. So, I don't, I'm sure we'll double up in March if we need to, but I just wanted to get ahead of that, that there may be some things missing from that, and it's not through any fault of our department heads. It's just a matter of timing. Does anyone have any question? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the Treasure. We have Agenda Item Three, the January Treasurers Report. Molly.
Good evening. So, first, just an update on Invoice Cloud. I was ill for December's meeting, so I didn't get to update, but that went live at the end of November. It didn't come without issue, but overall, it's been pretty positive. Lots of correspondence from citizens, especially with utility bills for that December bill, but most of it was just educating them on how to use the new system. Pat Martin, the utility billing clerk, and I were just joking that we don't see each other nearly as often as we did last month because she was in my office almost all day, every day, as we sorted through issues. So, the communication is decreasing, which I think is a good sign. We have a lot of volume. So, I figure in the month of December, we saved on the city side alone around four thousand dollars. So, hopefully, that continues. That people are using it more, cutting down on traffic, but also saving the city on those in-person credit card fees. We just wrapped up, or sent out our January settlement for all taxes that were collected by the end of the year. Our collection was down slightly from last December, but I think that's partially due to the fact that people don't get the tax exemption that they used to on their real, or on their income taxes. People are kind of catching on to that, and they're not so strict on that December thirty-first deadline. I'll be interested to compare at the end of just January to see how overall that first installment collection compared to last year. So, not alarmed, but it is down slightly over previous year. And we sent out our December, or January settlements for December collections last Friday to the school districts and the county. Budget books went into everyone's mailboxes today. That's a duty that we took over from the Clerk's Department. So, we had Intern Hope Carlson here over her school break. As she was here for a few weeks, and she was a big help in getting those assembled and ready to go. Other than that, year-end, we have lots of year-end reporting, year-end financial statement preparation. All of those things are in full swing. Cam Lambert has the W-2s completed, so everyone should have those and getting the rest of our ten ninety-nines and those things out the door by the end of the month. Then on to the December thirty-first Cash and Investments Report. So, the big change you'll see in the general fund specifically is that we used to have two different brokerage houses that, where we held investments in securities. When we invested our bond proceeds with Ellers, they came to us and proposed that we consolidate and move all of our investments under their umbrella. We really liked that idea. It's the same portfolio. The products don't change. It's just now under their watch. And with them being our financial planners and them helping us with our long-term financial goals, we just said it really aligned with our goals. And so, that transitioned during the months of November and December. Again, we're moving to great rates. I think I, our maturities that are coming up tomorrow, actually, we're renewing at five percent for three years. So, I think it might even be less than that. It might be twenty-four months. But, so, we're getting great rates, which is exciting, finally. Any questions on cash and investments?
That would entertain a motion to approve the Cash Investments Report.
Move to approve.
Doctor.
I got a motion by Sean and a second by no. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, Revenues and Expenditures in comparison to budget.
So, I've got the numbers in there through November. As we approach the end of the year, we're actually looking pretty great as far as the budget goes. Most departments are coming in under budget. There's a variety of reasons why that happened this year, but, you know, we'll be working to get the year-end adjustments in and get the numbers cleaned up for audit so that we'll have a better idea. But I do think we will come in under budget once again this year. Any questions on any of that? Yeah.
I noticed one thing. I'm not saying it's your fault, but I see no revenue in the Amish Department for fees for the month of November is zero. I don't think that's the accurate number.
For fees for November?
Number's got too late or what?
Yeah, I'll have to check on that. I know I booked December. I don't know why I wouldn't have booked November unless, I will double check on that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Parks and Recreation. We have Agenda Item Number Six, the Town and Parks and Recreation Program Report. Joe.
Good evening. I'll start with the Parks Department. Last month, I've been busy with snow removal, equipment maintenance, and rentals on the buildings. Winnebago Park project, kind of still working on the shelter for the bathroom slowly, but hopefully, when weather breaks, we'll get that completed down there. Working with Town and Country Engineering. We have a section at Fireman's Park. If you notice that, we do not, currently, we're not removing snow. We just feel it's a safety issue. It's part where that gets flooded quite heavily, and it's kind of neat. So, working with them, seeing what the best route would be for that part of the walking trail. We do have a sidewalk that goes through the middle of the park, and then you can go around to the new sidewalk on Brunel Street there. But there's a small section there that's, so I'll be working with that, taking that to the park board in the next month or two to see how we can fix that part of the trail. Also, there's been movements, some members, the community contacting our office about a possible disc golf course. So, work with Town and Country, see our best spots for that. So, we'll be working with the Parks and Recreation Commission this next year to see if there's an area in our community for, you know, possible for that, for that. We're getting closer to getting bid documents ready for the ball field. Hopefully, next month, we'll have that, take the park board and bring back to the council for approval and get that project moving forward this coming year with that. So, Recreation Programs, you can see we continue our winter programs. We're finalizing activities for Freeze Fest, working with different city departments, rotary, different community groups and businesses to see what we can offer this year for Freeze Fest. That's the last week of January, first week of February for that. Aquatic Center, starting to work on scheduling for that the next coming months and try to get ahead of the game for that for next, this coming summer. Recreation Park, you can see the activities in December. We had a busy month. January's full, February's full. Our first open date is actually the third week in April. There are only vacant date open in the spring. So, a lot of activities there this weekend. There is a Packerland Rabbit Show. And then, of course, the Ice Center has a multitude of activities throughout this month and two for high school youth, figure skating and so forth. And Exhibit Building has youthed high school gymnastics. So, continue to try to make the facilities ready for all the user groups out there. And we did have a follow-up meeting with Keller and Tonguey Uth Hockey after last month's council approval. And hopefully, next couple of weeks, we'll get the final design to review and then get that out to bid as well to try to keep on that. So, any other questions, concerns? All right, thank you.
Moving on to Public Works and Utilities. We have Agenda Item Seven, the Public Works and Utilities Director Report. Kirk.
Good evening.
Evening.
Start with the Street Department. It's time for most people to put the Christmas trees out of their house, and we'd appreciate those to be out by the end of next week. And be considerate, remove all the ornaments and decorations from those before placing them on the curb. Our salt usage is approximately three hundred and forty ton. That was prior to the last event that we had. We probably used another additional forty, fifty ton that day. We did take the Christmas decorations down from the streetlights, and we're working on various PC equipment that were in the capital project for purchase. One was a snowballer. We had a demo onto Rock Park. The other one is a chipper for the skid steer that we lease. And we should have received the tandem truck today, I believe it was. So, kind of getting some of the supply chain or the tandem Maxos from last year already and just getting it now. So, trying to get ahead of it with those purchases. Highway twelve and Veterans intersection has been bid. That is awaiting approval from the DOT. It was, from my understanding, outside of their estimate by, I think it's fifteen percent is their limit. So, it actually needs to go to the DOT higher-up authority for approval. So, that is not a guarantee that that intersection will be done, but the, both the city and the county wrote letters of endorsement based upon our discussions with the engineer and the bids and how they came in. So, we'll see where that goes. The Sewer Department, really, both sewer and water operations are normal. At the Sewer Department, we did have contractor working on roof replacements, and that is complete. And the Water Department, we did have a major leak at Trailer Park along Simon Avenue, but I believe that they have that fixed. It was about a million gallons that went through it before it could get fixed. Also, it was, was pretty significant. And then, the last item is Lake Committee. We do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at five o'clock in the chambers here. And I would encourage you to pay attention to our roster. That has changed quite a, quite a little bit with all the retirements. And we are actively have a truck driver position posted right now that we're recruiting for. And I believe that that's all I have. Let's see, have some questions?
The three hundred and forty tons of salt, is that the average normal down sideways?
It seems to be kind of the new norm.
Now, are you sitting, are you still okay? You got enough on hand?
Yeah, we're sitting very well. We went into completely full. And we estimate that to be nine hundred to a thousand ton. So, the most that we've went through is seven hundred and twenty ton, I think, in one year. So, we have yet on order to receive two hundred ton plus another hundred and twenty reserved that we can take or not take, you know, either one. So, we'll be sitting pretty good.
What's the status on the ET construction as far as timeline?
Sure. We did post on the website an update to our five-year capital plan, and that was one of the projects that we did adjust with talking to the engineers and the county. We moved that up to twenty twenty-four is when we would anticipate that to be done. And we did, basically, we're looking at construction from the intersection of Highway twelve at West Veterans to the, lack of better words, the next ninety-degree corner by the gas company in that area, just past the food pantry. That would be the section that we would anticipate going in twenty twenty-four. The rest of it will be put on hold. We will apply for grants along the way for that, and that will be determined whenever the county and both us, hopefully, we can get grant money for it, but it is to be determined yet, the rest of it.
Kirk, I have a question.
Great.
That Highway twelve and Veterans, are you looking to put a roundabout in? Or are you just looking to just improve it overall?
It would be similar to what it is now, with the exception of the turn lanes being identified. I don't know if you come from the west, there's really, it's pretty vague on, you know, turning left or turning right and going straight. So, it is not a roundabout. And that was, it was never discussed, and it would have been driven by the DOT if that's the case. Really, the only big things or differences there is we're upgrading the utilities and water and sewer. And then, we've put in for any of the street signals would be the black-colored post to try to match the downtown theme and carry that further out. That would really be the significant improvements that you see there differences.
What's the update on the pizza intersection that we want to plug intersection?
That is scheduled for twenty twenty-five, I believe.
Roundabout or?
No, no, same, same situation. It would just be a traffic lane and identify the turn lanes both ways. Or increase or add turning lanes, I guess, would be the correct version.
Do you know why they wouldn't want a roundabout there?
No, they, they've never asked our opinion.
Because that'd be a perfect place for a roundabout.
I think it might not be large enough. Doesn't a roundabout take more land than a regular intersection?
It does, but with the traffic light being right there.
That's not just an entry.
Honestly, we, we don't have any control over that.
Yeah. I just wonder if they've reached out at all.
No, they haven't. And I think things have changed where communities can push back on them if you don't, you know, if they don't like them, but.
The roundabouts?
Yes.
See, I, my opinion would be the roundabout would be better way. Having two traffic lights back to back.
Is North Bend also scheduled for twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I believe. We had a little bit of question on that, but I'm pretty confident that the DOT settled it on twenty twenty-five. It's actually listed as twenty-five, twenty-six cycle, but to my knowledge, it's twenty twenty-five.
All right, any questions for Kirk? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Police Department. We have Agenda Item Number Eight, the December twenty twenty-two Police Department Monthly Report. Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Chief.
Update on some staffing. We had quite a bit. Paul Franta, one of our newer officers, resigned effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. A great young man, loved working for the Toma Police Department, but he decided that he wanted to move to Minneapolis where his friends are, go to EMT school. So, he's been accepted at EMT school. His last day was December thirty-first. He worked New Year's Eve for us. He, all of our officers have come into our organization, signed a three-year contract because it costs so much money to bring people in, train them, put equipment on them, et cetera. So, he's aware that he's got until February first to bring versus city six thousand dollars. It's his choice. He's got no problems with it. Don't have it yet, but it's unfortunate, but I wish him the best. Officer Audrey Gomez is in our field training program. She's doing very well. She's got about a week left, two weeks, and she'll be on solo patrol. So, she'll be one of our new third shift officers. Ethan Pedersen started with us January twenty-third. He's getting inundated into the Culture Department. He starts the academy second week of February, and he'll be ready to go, come back to us in July. He'll go through the field training process. So, that leaves us with one opening right now. We had in a, we advertised for the position. We suspended the process due to a lack of qualified applicants. We had two applications that were going to show up on our Hiring Process Day, which is extremely low. One of them has some background issues. Another one has no academy and no higher education. The state of Wisconsin requires sixty college credits. They do give you a five-year window. So, if you hire an officer, they can be a police officer in the state of Wisconsin or maintain their certification until five years. And by that five-year time, you have to have at least sixty college credits. So, we're not to the point now where we're hiring people that don't have the education. We've never done that, but it may be something we have to look at in the future. You know, that'll be a discussion between myself and the Police and Fire Commission. But we opened up a new process, and hopefully, that gets more applications. We have one, you want, go ahead.
What do you mean by no education except?
Beyond high school. No, I guess, secondary education, college education. You know, so I do know, like the State Patrol, they have been hiring people that don't have the sixty college credits. You do get credits when you go to the academy. I think you get about around twenty credits. So, they, the State Patrol's allowing their people to basically, not all, most of them have the qualifications, but some of them, some of them have that five-year window to get other credits. And it's easier nowadays with online schooling and whatever. I mean, if you apply yourself again, you can get it off pretty quick.
Well, maybe something that you would look at, if they don't have any higher education on that six thousand dollar application to do that, are they going to be eligible for that?
I'm sorry, I don't.
For that, we give them so much opportunity to come in, and we give them.
Oh, the bonus?
Yeah.
Yes, but we're, we're just not there yet with the hiring without the city's college credits. I'm not there. I'm not comfortable with it right now. With the college credits, you get life experience and, you know, you're removed from mom and dad's house, and you're out of society, and you're on a college campus, if that's the route you choose. So, that, I think that's beneficial to the life experience, helps us quite a bit.
Would you consider, you know, training as a different aspect over the college if they had more experience in the military?
Yeah, there's things that go into that. If I was, if we had a candidate that just got out of active-duty military instead of going to college when you're eighteen, if you decided to join the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines and do that, but you don't have your college credits, but you're coming into us at twenty-two, twenty-three years of age, and you've been living around the world and life experience and maturity. And yeah, I mean, objectively, we would look at that for sure. I think there's a difference between that scenario and someone that graduates high school and they're eighteen years of age. And, you know, there's, there's a difference there.
Is there a chance to advertise in the military? You know, like if there's, if someone, because people are familiar with.
The only place we could really advertise the military would be out of Fort McCoy.
Yeah.
You know, we do get some inquiries from it.
That's good, maybe someone.
Yeah, we're, we're all over the place. We're, we're online, we're, we're at academies, we're at college settings. The problem is, is everybody is hired, and I mean, everybody's hired. You know, when I got hired in Toma in nineteen ninety-nine, there was maybe one or two places hiring at the time, you know. Now, there's eighty-plus, and it's all about location and compensation. That's, that's, that's where it's at, you know. And it's tough. It's competitive. There's bonuses. We've talked about this before, you know. It's tough to get people and to hang on to people. All we can control really is the culture of the department and taking care of our people as best we can. But you got to get them in the building to get that, you know.
How, how many officers do you have set to retire within the next two years?
Well, I'm eligible to retire right now.
You're not eligible.
Okay. I, I don't, you sound like my wife. She's insane. She doesn't like it. I plan to go no sooner than twenty twenty-five. Okay, so I got two, three years left before I'm really strongly considering chapter two of my life. Melody Marshall is just a little bit younger than me. She can go at any time. She's our school resource officer, and most, you know, Mel. She's mentioned nothing to me about retiring. I think she likes what she's doing, so I think she'll stick around for a bit. And outside of that, it's going to be quite a while. Eric Pedersen would probably be next. Yeah, it is good. So, I think we're, we're pretty solid in that regard, you know. Any other questions on that? With that, we have a open sergeant position right now. We have a process going. We're working through that. I meet with the Police and Fire Commission next Monday night, and I'll speak to them, and we'll come to a decision. What benefits us with the sergeant position is it creates a ten-to-ten slot, ten A to ten P, and we can use that sergeant to cover overtime shifts or what would be overtime shifts for supervisory staff and patrol staff. Right now, if we were to leave that open position in the patrol room, or excuse me, in the sergeant's office, patrol can, that extra patrol officer can cover patrol overtime, but they can't cover supervisory overtime. So, this helps us kind of manage our overtime budget. So, we'll be looking to do that, and I'll, I'll let you guys know, obviously, who we decided to promote next month. Giving Tree, um, and I was gone in December, um, so I'll update you on a couple of things. Uh, Giving Tree, uh, was a success this year. We expanded it to a hundred and twenty children. Uh, thinking about, uh, bringing it even more next year to a hundred and fifty. Um, very good, uh, program. Now, the Holiday Train, uh, if you guys were there or saw it, it was a, a ton of people. This year more so than, uh, we've had in quite a, quite a while. I think we're gonna have to start staffing that with, with officers. We normally have like the on-duty officers stop by, but there's, it's kind of like downtown Thursday nights. It's getting so big that we have to have dedicated officers there. Uh, so I think we're gonna start doing that with the Holiday Train. Uh, we have our third annual golf outing this year, July, or excuse me, June ninth at Hiawatha. Uh, so mark your calendars. We, uh, need all the support we can for that. And, uh, just a, uh, reminder to, uh, our businesses in town, especially on the north end. Uh, last Friday, we had, uh, two counterfeit one hundred dollar bills, uh, that were passed. Uh, just, I guess reminding our, our stores up there to, uh, pay attention to these large bills coming in. Uh, north end of town typically means it's coming between Minneapolis and Chicago, and this is a place to stop, pass off some bills. You know, what you do is you make a smaller purchase and all you have is a hundred. So you're getting your product and then your change that you're getting back is, is real money. Um, so we've had two, two of those cases, uh, on Friday. So hopefully, uh, no more. Any questions, though?
All right, moving on to the general portion of the agenda. We have agenda item number nine. Special beer permit application for the Toma Warren Sportsman Alliance for the TWSA Ice Fishery on Saturday, February, February eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I've got a motion by Richard and a second by Sean. Any discussion? Hearing none, of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item ten, Lake Toma U snowmobile races for the Warrens W I K C R Northeast Club on Saturday, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Nellie and a second by Sean to approve. Any discussion? Becky?
I just would like to mention and would like to ask if this could be approved pending receiving the current insurance documents for this. That's one thing that has not yet been submitted to these, this organization. And, um, my understanding is they need to get a little closer to the event before they can secure the insurance. But, uh, just to make sure that we are able to get that from them is part of, I mean, that's part of the process. We don't yet have that.
Nellie, you got a, a venue motion, Pat?
Yep.
Sean, give you a second. All right, sounds good. So we have a motion and a second to approve pending we receive insurance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item eleven, second-hand article in jewelry dealer licenses application for Eco ATM LLC of Toma.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Sean and a second by Nellie. Any discussion? Hearing none, of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item twelve, application of class B liquor and class B fermented malt beverage licenses for Brick Sip House.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion by Mitch and a second by Sean. Any further discussion? Hearing none, of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item thirteen, resolution for payment of monthly bills.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Richard and a second by Lamont. Any discussion? Hearing none, of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item fourteen, Central Square Records Management System migration for the Toma Police Department, chief.
Okay, um, where to start with this? Um, I'll give you a little bit of background of where we're at with our systems in our department and how we ended up here. Uh, a records management system, for those that don't know, that's where all your reports are housed, your M I, M N I, I'll discuss it up, master name index is housed. Everything we do is housed inside a records database. And since two thousand and four, we've been using a company called Omnago. Uh, it used to be ITI, but these software companies kind of buy and sell each other. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen-ish, uh, a lot of departments in Monroe County got together and they did some research on upgrading records management systems. And during that time, um, during that time, the Sparta Police Department, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, the jail, the district attorney's office, Castion Police Department, um, all went with a company called Zerker, which is now Central Square. And the basis of that was is this is new technology that offers a lot. So there is a server that sits in the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, um, in their IT department, and everybody is basically plugged into that, uh, records management system. Dispatch uses what's called, uh, CAD computer aided dispatch. So when you call nine-one-one, if there's an action or whatever, they're typing notes into this CAD and they start building cases for everybody. All these agencies can see the same data. You see it in real time. You're driving down the road in your squad car, and as information comes in, you're able to view that. So they're able to see what's going on, uh, what the suspect is, whatever, uh, the name pops up on your MDC, your mobile data computer. There's booking photos of people. Um, it's basically technology at your fingertips. They have a, a GIS mapping system in there. So if you get called somewhere, uh, there's links in there. So if, when we, we frequently go outside of the city of Toma, uh, for, uh, mutual aid. If there's something on Icebox Avenue, you can hit a button and it literally takes you, um, turn-by-turn directions from where you're at to how to get there. Right now, I guess to, to dumb it down, um, right now, everybody in Monroe County, law enforcement, DA, jail, whatever, are speaking English. And we're speaking French or German. We're not, we're able to get things done, but it's not efficient. We're not utilizing technology that is available to us. When we send reports to the district attorney's office, they get what Toma sends them and they work with that, but everybody else is sending them a different product. So they have to do things differently to accommodate us. When people are getting dispatched, the dispatchers at the Monroe County Communication Center are dispatching emergency units for law enforcement a certain way. And then they dispatch a different way for Toma. There's more radio use for us. They gotta give us more information. And when they're training their people, they literally have to train them different ways. So, um, in two thousand and seventeen, uh, then Chief Nicholson wanted to just kind of take a wait-and-see approach with this to see how, because it's, it's a pretty big undertaking. Wanted to wait and see how it's working for other departments before we went forward with it. And, uh, we just kind of been sitting back and working. I became chief in April of twenty twenty-one, and I'm all about using technology for what we can do to improve our product. So the problem with this was, is it's kind of been like, if I had here, I'd be pulling it out, but, uh, we have a third-party IT person or company called Three RT dealing with them, dealing with Monroe County IT that houses the server of this. Um, and then, uh, this software company wasn't as responsive as I wanted them to be. And everything wasn't aligning until we've had multiple meetings and conference calls and Zoom meetings. And everything over the past month or so has now come together where it all makes sense, uh, for us to, to move forward with this. So that's one aspect of this. That's why we want to go to this. The other aspect of, of this, um, and I talked to, um, Kiefer earlier, is the financing of it. So it was not in the capital project, uh, meetings that we had earlier in the year. And it wasn't because I didn't want to bring a half-baked product to you guys. At the time, I didn't think it was, it was even gonna happen. But here we are. So I spoke to, uh, SET a couple of times about this. I was told that, um, financing this is feasible, it's doable, and that it would be put into, uh, the resolution that was passed last month with council. So that brings us here today where I'm seeking approval to move forward with this project and start this six-to-eight month migration.
So I just have a question. I'm not sure how, how this works.
Sure.
Um, this is something that's gonna help our data that comes in from different agencies, correct?
We would be sharing information systems. So when the Sparta Police Department, uh, deals with John Jones, um, all that information, we have access to it. We have access to reports, their databases, everything. They have access to ours.
So you guys can see each other's.
Absolutely.
Okay.
There are many times, uh, because, you know, I mean, I have relationships throughout the county and law enforcement, of, of course, but I will be at home, I'll be on vacation, and I will get a phone call or a text message from an administrator from a different agency telling me what's going on in Toma. Because it's literally, it's, you, you even get it on your phone. They call it, uh, field ops where, um, I would open up an app on my phone and I see literally everything that's going on in the county. Right now, um, I either get a text message from someone else or our sergeants are required to contact our administrative team. And eventually it gets to me and I find out something big is going on in Toma. So there's a, there's a little bit of it.
So everybody's gonna be on board eventually with the system. So you can communicate together.
Actually, Toma's the only one that's not.
Yeah.
In this area. We're the only one that isn't on board with it.
Is, like, Jackson County and, uh, that county's strong in this?
Yeah, no, it's just Monroe County. So the state patrol, no, they're on their own system, like everything else. But, yeah, all the law enforcement.
I mean, it makes sense. I mean, as a first responder in the fire department, we have, yeah, you can, you get the CAD. And you can read through it and see through it and maps you to where you're gonna go.
So this CAD I'm talking about, all the information that comes in, dispatchers are typing it up. So right now, when they're done typing and assigning case number or whatever they do, they email us the CAD, and then we are literally in our records management system because they don't talk to each other. The officers are sitting there typing in the exact same stuff as far as who the suspects are, the vehicles involved, the time of the call, the time we were in route, the time we were on scene, the time, all that stuff we're re-typing where you wouldn't have to do that because it's already built into it.
And you're saying that the annual cost is almost three thousand dollar savings?
Yes. So it pays for itself after about eight years.
So the initial cost upfront is the sixty-six A?
It is.
And then a yearly fee of about eight grand?
Uh, yes, sir.
For the first year? Is that what they're figuring for every year? What are we paying now for the system we have?
Uh, about sixteen thousand. And, and you have your, you have your, every year goes up, you know, I don't know what the most goes, four, five percent.
But we're cutting it in half, but we have an hourly of sixty-seven thousand.
Yes, yeah, upfront, absolutely.
That's where you get it. Eight years of pay for itself.
Right.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mitch and a second by Sean. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. We're just, uh, approving the seven thousand first or the whole sixty-six thousand?
We're, I, my motion was to allow him to start migrating this to a point where we go to the new system. So that wouldn't cost the sixty-six thousand?
So the, just so everyone's clear, the number that I'm asking for is eighty thousand, okay? And the reason for that is, is, you know, th- this is for the software system, okay? I don't anticipate spending eighty thousand dollars, but I want it available because once you start, once you start incorporating Three RT. Now, uh, Three RT has been excellent to work with, okay? But Three RT costs money. And I'm trying to minimize their involvement at all. They have to establish what, uh, you don't know what I'm talking about. It's a VPN into this server, uh, which is basically a remote, secure connection into their server. So that costs money. But the less I can use Three RT, and I think that's all I needed for it, the better. But I do need some cushion because I don't want to come back here saying, hey, I guess I need two thousand, or hey, I guess I need this.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That matches with the resolution among also being, um, do you have any money for this out there or?
We're constantly looking, but no. I wish there was.
I mean, to me, it just makes sense to be at the same.
Oh, is that going to turn up? Is that gonna hurt the budget or where? Cause we're asking for eighty thousand, right, though, correct? Instead of the sixty-six?
So the way that would work, uh, as part of that reimbursement resolution that says that anything on that list, uh, can be included in our bonding. So it would increase our, uh, debt service, um, but it's doable. I mean, it would, the operating budget would actually decrease, although I'm assuming you probably paid, um, the goal for this year.
Yeah.
That'll probably take effect next year. But as far as, um, how we would pay for it, we would roll it into our bonding in the spring, and that's why we included it in that resolution.
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure it takes many months to.
They're estimating six to eight.
So, and they're doing all that work, correct?
They do project management? Yes. Uh, they, that, that's part of this. They have project management and they have this and that. But we also have people that'll be dedicated to it, like Lieutenant Furlano, very, uh, very motivated, very, uh, tech savvy forecop, if you will. Um, he will be our project manager. He'll be coordinating stuff, but you're gonna have a heavy dose of, uh, uh, Furlano, myself. Uh, Eric Patterson will be involved. Rhonda will be involved. Uh, they say six to eight months. My lieutenant says a couple of months. We'll see.
Make it double?
Yeah, yeah.
So more between two and eight?
Yeah, right. But it'll, it'll, it'll take a little bit.
Uh, Lamont, did you still have a question?
Yes. Yeah, did, you know, normally something of this size and, and a capital project usually comes through our budget workshop and through the capital for your departments. Um, it didn't, we, we talked over quite a few things at that time and people made trade-offs and et cetera. And now this just kind of, I, I don't like this term, but for lack of a better term, kind of slid into that resolution out of nowhere. And so.
Sorry, I can speak to the resolution.
And I thought that resolution only, uh, and this, I, I apologize if I didn't do my due diligence on this, but I thought that resolution only covered things that we okayed in the budget workshop and we were just gonna agree to pay them out of, it was just the how we paid them, not that there was any new projects in that list.
So that.
I did not check them against the budget.
Yep.
To see if they were all in, so.
So that resolution does not say that we will be purchasing these items or that we will be bonding for these items. It says we can. So when we were working and the department had meeting to compile the list, I took everything from the budget workshop that was approved. And I said, well, at the time Kirk had a garbage truck that he was bringing to December council. Well, we had already been through the budget process. It wasn't in there, but he knew, it came up. Um, and Chief Holm said, well, I, I thought this was gonna be a twenty twenty-four expense, but the way that things are coming together, it looks like we could get this done now and streamline our process. So we put it on the list. We then told him he has to bring it to council for approval of the project. Again, that reimbursement resolution just says we can add this to our bonding. We have not yet approved the list of what we are going to bond for.
So, um, so.
Just disappointed that it was, that it's done that way, that we don't know about it. Or that it wasn't highlighted that in that list are a couple of things that we did, that didn't come through the capital at the budget workshop. Because, like I said, I made that assumption, and like, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm guessing other council members did too. That, that list only included things that had already been okayed through
Sure.
the capital project in our budget workshop.
I mentioned it at the November meeting. I was ill for the December meeting, so I wasn't here for the, uh, presentation of the rate, the resolution. So I apologize. I was not here to answer questions on that or to present it, but I did mention it in the November meeting that it was the list from the budget plus a few things that had come up. Again, the dump, the garbage truck, um, there were a couple of taxis that we got the match in on, um, from the state. They do eighty. We had to do twenty. We got final numbers on that. Some things that were kind of up in the air during the budget workshop, but we anticipate would be coming to council within the twenty twenty.
To include this? You mentioned this also?
I don't think, no, I don't think I specifically, I don't even know if that was on the list in November yet, but I just said that we would be.
Cause I, because if you did, I mean, I, like I said, I probably, my, my memory is not good enough, then.
Nope.
Cause that has happened.
It was the timing of it. We were adding a few things and then Chief Holm spoke up and said, oh, by the way, I think this might, could be happening this year. It might not. Even at the time that we put that together, we still didn't know if it would be twenty-three that he'd be asking for it or twenty-four. But we threw it in to cover in case it did come to.
Well, I would appreciate in the future if we have something like a resolution or, or something like that. I, I don't know where it might arise because I, I can't know what I. I don't know where it might arise, because I can't know what I don't know. But that is highlighted if things are out of the ordinary, or, to me, that's out of the ordinary. Maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, Richard, and then, now, any questions, Richard?
I've got one question and a comment. Question is, will this system be of any value to the fire and EMS departments?
Really, no. They're, I don't, I don't know if they do reports, at least to the magnitude that, clearly not the magnitude that we do, I don't, I don't know, but no, they're.
EMS does, probably.
I don't know what their report would look like, maybe they do. I don't know anything about the systems they use.
Fire-wise, pretty much most fire use I am responding to. It's more geared, it's based for fire.
Yeah, it's pretty much in-house, involves the State Department of Health as far as the ambulance service.
Yeah.
But the, the other question I was thinking of was the dispatch part of, as far as direction-wise to get to locations, will that be available to EMS and fire?
I think maybe. I think it would take some technology on EMS and fire's side. This is all run through a mobile data computer, so all of our squad cars, not all, but the ones you see on the street, I mean, admin vehicles don't have them, it runs through your computer. And your computer is, it's hooked up. These squad cars are basically a mobile office. They have internet inside it, they have GPS in them. And I don't know if fire and, or EMS has that technology in their apparatuses.
I don't think they do right now. The other question I, or comment I have is, I think, just eliminating the redundancy of the officers duplicating what's already being done over at Monroe County by dispatch, would say was a considerable amount of time to make the department more efficient.
Oh, yeah, there's, I mean, we talked about retaining people. So Sparta, Sparta and Toma, very close relationship. When they have an event going on over there, where they need all their officers, call it a Christmas party or whatever, we'll have officers go over there and work, they return the favor. To us, we do it every year, multiple times a year. Almost every single time that I have an officer go over there in Sparta and work, they work on the system, they come back, and they're like, we're gonna get this, chief? We need this, this is great stuff. So, you know, we were, and I understand what you're talking about, with, you used the word, I think you slid in, not the intention, I understand where you've come to that conclusion, you know, where this come from. The reality is, is this is something I've wanted for a while, and we've wanted for a while, but I didn't think it was gonna happen. It took, it took a lot of meetings and a lot of conversations and a lot of, lot of work on the backend before I figured it was gonna happen.
Yeah, I was not talking about the merit of the program.
Yeah, no, no, I get it. And if I was sitting in your chair, I'd probably have the same question, I get it.
Because it got in this list, and now it's like, oop, we located? And I honestly did not, oh, we did.
Yeah, there was no, there was no ill will with that at all.
Do you have a question?
I do. Um, so, I'm not quite sure what the motion is. Are we going to approve the full 66,000, or what?
The motion is approve 80, because it's 66 for the software, and then there's a bit more to go in if they have to work with 3RT for implementation or support outside of what would be offered by.
Yeah, that's, the 80 is what I was looking.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's what we're approving today.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, that's my motion. And then, keep that in mind, we're saving $8,000 a year forward to it. So that's a huge part of this.
So eventually, it pays for itself.
Eventually, it pays for itself.
The other question too is, when you were talking, it sounded like there's a bit of transposing that happens with our employees moving stuff from, oh, I lost the name of this already.
Ammu, or you talked.
Central Square into Omegle, yeah. Do you have, and I realize I'm asking you on the spot, like a ballpark figure of how many hours your staff is going to save not having to take that information and put it.
I'm guessing it's, you know, it's, depending on how fast the officer is, it's probably five to 10 minutes per report, and we have 2,500 reports a year. So whoever's got the quick math on that.
25,000 minutes?
Yeah, it matters.
My last question is maintenance, is that a yearly thing?
Yearly thing, yep.
But I think we have a yearly charge now with Omegle.
Oh, yeah, everything, everything electronic has a service to be attached to it. The other thing too is we, in our squad cars right now, we have a program called MACH. That's where an officer can run license plates and run criminal histories and whatever. And that, and then tracks, that's where you issue citations and warnings or whatever. But we don't have this records management system that we use. This Omegle is not in our squad cars. This is in squad cars. So it was another, other layer for that.
If 25,000 minutes was the thing, that's over $400 hours.
And do we have a maintenance company that's going to be local? To do the maintenance once we get up and running?
No, that's, that maintenance agreement or service contract is actually through Central Square.
Okay.
So nowadays, what happens, if there's an issue, people are just remoting in. Like 3RT will, we provide them some kind of a port, and they remote right into our computer system, so they can fix it from anywhere. So that's typically what happens. The days of people coming on, seeing are, doesn't happen very often anymore.
You don't want to pay for someone to drive all that way, you know?
Yeah.
I had to ask, I had to ask.
No, it's a good, it's a good question.
Where are they located?
3RT?
No, just Central Square.
I wanted to see, is there, Florida, Lake Mary, Florida.
Lake Mary, Florida, okay.
Yeah, so all the training, all the project management, all that stuff. I mean, everything, if COVID taught us anything, we figured out that we can, we can live a little bit differently. So Zoom is all over the place, so they zoom in, remote in, you know. People coming on the scene is even part of it, between these days.
So how much training is it gonna have for your staff?
It depends on, it depends on the tier. You're gonna have investigator training, you're gonna have patrol officer training, sergeants have a different thing, it's all workflow. So when a, however you set this up, so when an officer will finish a report, or whatever, we're clicking a button, we're not printing things, and electronically it goes to the sergeant who approves it, and it just goes down the road. So depending on what role you have in the organization, depends on the level of training.
All right, any other questions for chief on this one? All right, so a reminder, we have a motion and a second to approve the $80,000 to approve the installation of the Central Square Records Management System. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the info.
Man, Mike, I thought you were gonna get any conversation today, but you came in at just the right time. Moving to agenda item 15, resolution supporting Wisconsin Public Service Commission consideration of the City of Toma's energy innovation grant application. All right, there's a little confusion, does anyone?
Okay.
I got a motion by Richard and a second by Sean. Any discussion?
I have several questions.
All right, does, who from set wants to hop in first? Maybe give a brief, here's what we're looking at, and then we'll take questions.
So through our grant writers, this one is through Dandoall. They've identified a grant that, I think they're pretty safe to say that's the direction of our society with EV charging units. And this is a grant through the PSC that will look at our community as a whole and identify those areas where charging units can go. And it's not just as easy as, let's put one there. It's coordination, Tweed, Alliance, Oakdales, you know, your energy companies. There's a lot more than what I anticipated, because when you just look at the community as a whole, I think I know where the best ones are, but they take into consideration a lot more things with traffic from the interstates and all these various things. So we're proposing to write a grant, and in this, we are saying that we would do a 20% match. That would equate to roughly $8,000 from our end. That's basically the gist of it.
It does matter to what, I guess?
The 20% match would be our participation.
Instruct. How many?
This is a study of the entire community.
Okay.
To where the locations would benefit everyone.
So it's a 40, $50,000 study.
It has nothing to do with installation?
Well, it'll identify areas.
Where, where that, but it has nothing to do with the installation.
Correct.
No, no hardware, no.
Correct, it's the plan.
Okay.
And I, I would put it in perspective that the next step is going to be for a grant for the installation of these, and they're gonna.
You need this grant to get the next grant.
There you go.
Grant section. Richard, any questions coming?
I have a couple of questions. One is, what's the long-term goal? Is it to be a charging stations that the city operates and gets the revenue from?
Right now, probably not.
Okay, then the second question, with the police department, tentatively getting two electric vehicles, would one of those locations be for the city municipal use?
That'll be part of the plan, I'm sure.
They probably give them around the ability to charge the vehicles.
So I guess I do know from the grants that the police department applied for, the charging units were in that, included in that cost. I'm not even sure where we're at with that, but I think this is more of the bigger picture for the community. I think there are some hurdles on how that, first question that you had, Richard, on the revenue portion, if that is feasible for us.
Right now, we've got what, roughly around 14 or 15 charging stations in town?
I, I don't even know.
Well, we got.
We've got three.
We got Tap House 20, we got Walmart.
Some in front of Walmart, we've got some by, the one, the insurance office out there by. Most of them are out there in that 21 intersection. And then there's some at Tesco, one's over on the other side by QuickTrip.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if there's other ones around town or not. I know there's six at the Tesco one, and four at the one at Walmart, and two, I believe, at the other one.
Four more at the other one there.
So six, so 14.
But I think to Kirk's point, where this is giving us as a community to look forward. So, you know, whether what we have or where it is now isn't necessarily, I mean, electric vehicles are, they're coming down the pike, and that's where the majority of development in the auto industry is going, is these sorts of things. So whatever we can do to prepare ourselves for the demand ahead of time, instead of there being a boom of electric vehicles, and now we don't have any charging stations, right? So I think it's one of those, we're future-proofing Toma a little bit. So we're being proactive instead of reactive, is kind of where I'm looking at this.
Yeah, and I think the grant is gonna focus on our, where we are. You know, where the high divides is a huge welfare for, you know, travelers, so. I think you're spot on, I wouldn't talk about that. That's, that's what our intent here is.
So are they gonna highlight public properties, for these or private properties?
Um, right now, anything is on the table.
Okay.
I think it could possibly be, you know, a combination of maybe city's property, but then a private individual or entity, you know, operating them, or.
Kirk, like, I think the study might help too. Like in Chicago, they went through and figured out the reinstallation cost of the charging stations in us. When they went, if you look at the more efficient light poles downtown, the power's available, and they can put in a charging station where people are parked, go to the store. They do both, you know, they can actually use some of the extra heavy-duty cabling for the inefficient lighting, and they can charge car versus, you know, so it's kind of a, there's all sorts of things that people are doing. If this, whoever's doing the study, if they do, they probably have a lot of ideas, what worked out in places.
We do have a letter of support from Oakdale Electric in their process, and they obviously promote this. And, you know, we would like this letter, yeah.
Do we have the 8,000 in the budget to cover that 20%?
So we, um, we, we have enough in our grant writing budget for that. And we do view this as a kid eligible cost also. In, in the grant, we've also added verbiage to identify to try to help the downtown and the revitalization of that, all those things.
I have a question.
We already have a motion, we have a motion and second from Richard and Sean to approve.
I have a question from Lamont. Are the state charging stations that we've got around town presently, are they taxable property? Or not?
I would have to look. I think they're on commercial property, so I don't think, we don't judge like personal property on them, but it's on taxable parcels.
Is it an improvement?
Yeah.
Is it, are we considering improvement?
I don't know that it would be, I mean, it's.
She's curious.
Moveable property, yeah, I don't think they're, and.
Trying to pardon, but they're set up as being part of the property, it's not a movable thing, like you said.
Yeah, I could check with the assessors on how they handle that in other areas and let you know next month, but I don't know off the top of my head how those are handled.
Or do we turn to install them?
Not for the city.
Not unless there's some sort of permitting or something like that.
Not at this point.
Someone needs to look at it. Permit? There might be a permit on chains that for electrical, but that'd be pretty minimal.
Maybe we can round out that, it is a future.
That might be something that they would look at, again, how other communities are handling those pieces.
I would like to see what, how many communities are doing like that.
Any other questions? All right, so as a reminder, the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I can't stand.
Got a motion by Lamont, a second by Mitch to adjourn.
And a question by Richard.
Any discussion on it, yeah?
Going back to last month's minutes, we had a resolution to weigh the first reading of the mortgage change. I didn't see anything on the current agendas for the second reading, so that couldn't be on the March agenda.
Huh?
It would be on February's agenda. It's not ready for January's just yet, it'll be on February's. You're talking about the ordinance change?
Yeah, the one that we weighed the first reading on last month.
Yeah, that's the ordinance. We'll bring that in February for you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor adjourn, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? As of 7:38, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody. Oh, that's not bad, that's good. Well, but Price is Right timing, you're still on here, so that's still, that's still.
She's the waiting room. We're doing this upside down.
That's hard to do in the face in the right way, because everything stops.
Okay, thank you for all your patience. At this point in time, is there anybody desiring to appear before the council? If not, we will proceed.
Hi, you, Pete Thorson?
Yes, thank you, please state your name and address.
Pete Thorson, 2522 Highland Avenue, Toma.
Great, thank you, and just a reminder, you will have three minutes, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Mayor and Council Mayor, or Council Penny, I'm tired of being lied to. For years, you have told me you could do nothing to pick and help me with the obstacles until I annexed to the city. I've been annexed for two years, and nothing has been done. Specifically, two years ago April, we sat in council chambers, and we talked about a hydraulic study. And everybody agreed that you could provide me a copy of a city requested hydraulic study for Deer Creek. And to this date, no one, the DNR, Shane Penny, can provide me with a copy of an approved hydraulic study, which I have. hydraulic study, which I have said I need and is required. Second, I've asked numerous times and provided you notice in May of last year regarding the water displacement and the encroachments on my property. City attorney provided me a response that it's been like that for a long time. I should have notified you earlier. Well, I couldn't notify you until a complete survey was done and we noticed that it was in the utilities in the storm sewer were in my property. What I'm saying is, is get me an avenue to take and have that fixed, so it's not affecting our property, or I will make provisions and have it moved. I'm getting a two-week notice to take and get back to me and respond to that. That's why nothing happens in this city is because you guys don't address things and you just drop them and you think they'll go away. It's not gonna happen here. Please respond.
Okay, is that everything?
It is.
All right, thank you, appreciate your input. All right, anybody else desiring to appear before the council tonight? Okay, if not, we will move on. Uh, the mayor's report. I know that Freeze Fest is coming up, so these are, this is one of those events, I see Pam nodding, Pam nodding her head. You know, this is one of those events that we encourage people in the community to get involved. You know, just the little things, if it turns into too cold, there's a lot of indoor activities to do. You know, if you have a chance as council members, you know, see if you can go down, participate, help out. Again, it, you know, it's one of those, it's, it's one of those things that it happens every year and if we can make it a little bit bigger, it's one of those inviting things. I have, I've, I've met several people that just moved to the area and they're, you know, they're talking about the things that happen in small towns and, you know, that's one of them. And if they can feel a little bit more welcome, it, it just adds to them telling other people about their experience moving here. So, encourage everyone that can be there to, to go ahead and go there. A lot of people are volunteering, a lot of things are gonna be going on, so just make sure you, you keep an eye on, I believe it's on the homepage for Freeze Fest. We put it, yeah, let's make sure we get it on the homepage if it's not on there. But otherwise, that's everything I have. We'll go to the senior executive team.
I guess you have a report in front of you. I'll throw up if there's any questions or comments.
I have a question for your first question about support of Monroe County and the economic development position. Do you know why they decided to back out of that?
I don't, other than funding, I'm not sure.
They just didn't want us to support that at all, huh?
Yep, I, I don't actually know.
Tina? I mean, they, several years ago, they decided that they...
I'm sorry, Tina, I'm sorry.
Get up.
I gotta have you come to the microphone.
It was probably two, three years ago now, they decided they couldn't measure a lot of the dynamics and wanted to put those funds towards a land use position for the county instead of the economic development position. So, decided that they felt things could be done on committee level, and I think at this point, they're reevaluating some of that. But I don't know that they'd be able to find funding for a full position again. But they're currently at a point where they are determining what the purpose of that committee is and how to restructure that so they have a little bit more effectiveness.
Thank you.
I will add, the last four point, we're looking for to fill some openings on the chamber table. We have a better quota for that. If there are people that would still want to attend, let me know, I can see while looking at a second table if, if it's needed.
Okay, any questions for Director Ernie?
I have one. In regards to the upstairs above the Miller's, the pharmacy, what condition was that in? I didn't notice you said they had your report. Just roughly, what's the condition of the building itself?
I would say in general, it's a time capsule from nineteen seventy-nine. It, literally, it is. It's just, people just up and walked away. There's still rooms there for, you know, like, smaller rooms where they did their record playing or DJ or announcements or whatever. The electricity is turned off. Really, it's not that bad as far as eroded. We haven't really seen rampant infestation, anything like that. I think the roof is pretty weak from, we had a piece of flat, or fascia that came off in that windstorm and our guys went up there to secure that. And they said the roof looked pretty weak on that side, so. Surprisingly, it, it didn't appear to be that bad, but the roof kind of concerns me after hearing that from them.
Okay, any other questions regarding the report? No, I just want to say I appreciate the report. It was nice to see it included in it.
Yeah, hopefully it answered, I, I think it was somewhat directed towards, I believe Richard had some questions on economic development, I think Mitch also had some. So, we tried to, you know, put a little bit more emphasis on that and what our direction is. Timing-wise, it's, you know, the beginning of the year and kind of use it as a kickoff to what we're working on and what we're doing. And hopefully, we'll keep expanding on that as we go.
I appreciate it. Great. Library. We will move on. Irma's not here this evening, so we'll go to public safety. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, everyone. You have my written monthly report. If you have any questions, let me know. A couple of highlights here, fires, on the fire department, I recently took two firefighters off of the eligibility list. On January fourth, I onboarded Justin Dettinger and Mike Linehan. So, we have two, two new faces there. We were very busy in December, mostly on motor vehicle accidents. We actually ran forty-six calls for service with all the icy conditions we had over the holidays, and it doesn't seem like this month is letting up too much either, so I'm very busy with that. A quick overview of the building project, everything's moving along as scheduled. Plumbers, HVAC, electric, electricians are making great progress. The carpenters are nearly done with the interior steel stud walls. The mason crews are still continuing to work on the interior walls. There's still quite a bit of work there yet with the nice weather that we've been having. They've still been having crews outside getting some of the brick veneer on, so they're making headway more than we kind of anticipated with, with the conditions of normally in January, right? So, we'll continue to keep going with the way things are. They started painting the wash bay today. That looks pretty good with the first coat on it. We're solving problems or, or not problems, but we're solving little, little detail things every day and we're there two, three times a day. And Keller's communicating very well and they're, they're, once again, I've said this before, they're, they don't have to ask me all these questions, but they are, and they're like, we caught this, it would look better to do something this way, what do you think? Yes. And I appreciate that they're giving me that, you know, thought process to be able to make them decisions to make the best building that we can for the future, so. Otherwise, that's going good. Tomorrow, I'll have a audit with Department of Safety and Professional Services on the fire department side of things, so I'm expecting that to go over well. So, again, that all ties in with our two percent dues through our fire inspections. It's a whole bunch of things that they come through and check all our documentation and things to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, so. As for EMS, we're still currently at full staff, fifteen full-time members, fourteen part-time members. We've been interviewing for part-time staff. We're gonna be onboarding three new individuals here in the next couple of weeks, so we'll have seventeen up to part-time. So, hopefully, we can continue to keep filling that third truck with part-time people. And now that we have a wage increase for twenty twenty-three, I think that will help fill those holes again and keep us away from hiring more full-time people, so saving us money. Ran two hundred and eighty-seven calls in December. Still continue to be very busy. We received a thousand dollar donation from QuickTrip. We thank them for that. And that's about it. Running the new ambulances up and down the road, we got about five thousand miles on it. We got company coming in, putting the radio in on Thursday. That will finish our state inspection and then we'll probably put it in the storage and wear all the old ones. Any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
On your monthly report for December?
Okay.
You have two hundred, uh, two hundred and ninety-three calls, but we have forty-three denied transfers. So, what are we doing to keep that, those trans, transfers? So, we can try to find a way to pick that up or decrease that?
So, we had, I'm not sure what numbers you got there. December stats was hundred and twenty-seven requested, we accepted eighty-four and declined forty-three.
I'm looking at the, at this report.
Seventy-nine, forty-three denied.
Yeah, denied transfer.
Seventy-nine is the ones that were accepted.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. They're looking at, they're looking at something different, and I'm just wondering if it didn't get transferred properly.
No. Accepted seventy-nine, denied forty-three.
That's still not right.
It's a hundred and twenty-two, so we're, here five that are missing.
Yeah, we took, we, we took eighty-three, this says accepted eighty-four, that's off by one. Anyway, to answer your question in a nutshell.
It says up here eighty-four and forty-three.
Yeah, there, there was twenty-seven that was, or one twenty-seven that was requested. We accepted eighty-four and we declined forty-three. And then if you look down through the thing there, that's basically what it is. And, and what you're gonna see is, a lot of them are outline hospitals. So, there's a lot of times that Black River Falls will call us in the middle of the night to try to go do a transfer. And we're already out on a transfer and we gotta keep one nine-one-one truck in the city. So, there's no way of doing it. It's gonna be a continual battle. You could put five ambulances on and we could take all the transfers around and somebody's still gonna call. And, you know, and it's been a big discussion internally on like, you know, we're here to take care of our community. We wanna make sure we have, we have to have a nine-one-one truck here, right? We wanna make sure we're taking care of the Toma people, the Toma taxpayers. Should we be going to Black River Falls to, I mean, we're getting calls from all over, Adams Friendship, Melville, Adams Hospital over there, Barokah, constantly. And it's like, then we're taking our truck out of service to be able to help our people. So, when we have that third truck on, so right now...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is that gonna show any improvement?
Depends on if we can fill that third truck. And that's, that's why we raised the rates on the part-time people to try to fill that third truck.
Is it, is it a feasibility to, you know, do a division of denied transfers, of in-town denied transfers and outline?
We, we've been talking about that, just to kind of...
Because it, and then it, because again...
Yep. So, so another...
Turning down a Black River is completely understandable.
Yep.
But that's any of it, isn't it? Doesn't it say in what?
So, so, so the good, the good numbers to look at, you know, would be is Toma ER, we're doing just under ninety-one percent. That's for, that's for the ER. We're doing, um, I should know these off the top of my head, we're doing just under ninety-two percent out of Toma Health OB. And we're doing over eighty-eight percent out of the Toma VA. So, we're taking care of...
If I go by percentage, okay.
So, we're taking care of our people in town here and we're trying to get as much action as we can just to bring more revenue in.
So, is there a way that we can break it down like the mayor said, to kind of show what you're here?
It's all here, it's all here in the report, you just have to read it.
Yeah.
It tells you everybody that they denied.
I just looked at the denied.
And I'd be glad to sit down with you and just go line by line through that sometimes so you understand it, but it's, it is a little bit complex. But that's the whole bottom line is, remember, we got five full-time staff if everybody's here, if nobody calls and sick, if nobody's on vacation, right? So, we got two and a half trucks and then we tried to either do a general page or, or if a part-time person comes in and works, that's where I said at the last meeting, it's hard to get people to fill those overnights and the weekends. I mean, people just don't wanna work overnights and weekends. So, hopefully, with the wage increases, that'll draw more people in to try to pick those hours up, 'cause I don't know why it is, but it seems like whenever they wanna call for these way-out-of-town transfers, it's one o'clock in the morning, it's two o'clock in the morning. It's, it's, it's never during the day, it seems like, so.
Yeah, I'll apologize. I did, I completely misjudged it here. I was looking at the, the graph rather than the breakdown.
Yeah.
That's what I got, thank you.
Okay.
I think you had a kind of a busy weekend or last couple of weeks on the interstate, the semis, I'm not...
Yeah, we had a bad one yesterday again, which didn't end up being a fatal or nothing, but it was, they were out there quite a few hours, so.
Thank you, sir. I see Ms. Irma snuck in. Jump on up. Well, you don't have to jump, but...
I can't.
Tina?
Even if I wanted to, I can't.
We missed you.
That's so kind. Thank you very much. That's very kind. Yeah, you find out who your friends are when you're sick.
I did miss you.
Stop it.
Will you pull the, will you pull the microphone down?
Michelle, okay. Good evening, everybody.
Tina and Pam will be coming up quick, so they're gonna need to dump everybody.
Still don't need that too. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. So, I wanted to give you a year-end update. We checked out in twenty twenty-two, we checked out twenty-two thousand three hundred and seven eBooks. And then the physical books that we checked out from the library were five, excuse me, fifty-two thousand nine hundred and eighteen, giving us a total of checkouts for twenty twenty-two of seventy-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five items.
Excellent.
Yeah, pretty exciting. While I was gone, the children's department received a lot of board games for both adults and childrens. And they were given to us by a patron who is connected to KuliCon. Some of you may know about that. So, we will have a board game day on January twenty-first. That's a Saturday from two to four. Our adult department, the annual holiday team, raised four thousand seven hundred dollars. So, thank you very much to the friends of the library and to the people who came and purchased the items and, of course, to our community for giving us things that we weren't able to raffle off. Thank you very much. We also got a promise of donation of two thousand dollars from the Toma Alliance to use for the installation of our outdoor sign. So, thank you, Toma Alliance, for partnering with the Toma Library. Right now, we are running our hot reads for cold nights and that goes until March thirty-first. You come in, you check something out. We can't check to see whether you read it, but if you come in and check something out, you can put your name in and we draw once a week. We have gift cards from local merchants. So, hopefully, that'll entice some people to come in, even more people. We have, on January twenty-sixth, we have the Woman King showing at five-thirty, so you are very welcome to that. To come to that, please check out our website at tomapubliclibrary.org for events or give us a call. We're always willing to tell you what's going on. Now, with the new year starting up, and I realize I've been coming here for many years and talking, most of you are still the same people. Now, with the new year starting up, and I realize I've been coming here for many years and talking, most of you are still the same people. So I wondered if you wanted to hear anything else about the library. I usually come here, and I tell you about the new books. I tell you how many things have been checked out, but I thought, New Year, does the council wanna hear anything else? Is there, do you, do you want me to come with?
I have one.
I don't know about you.
I have one question.
Yes?
So I know like New Year is New Year, New Year, New You type thing.
Yes, yes.
Have you cleaned your office?
How dare you? Ignore him. Actually, Dave cleaned my office while I was gone.
Oh, thank God.
So, yeah.
Probably can't find anything.
Absolutely. Um, where was I? Lost my train of thought. I, I, you know, let me know, um, if you're not comfortable telling me here right now. You can call me or send me a text or, you know, send me an email. Let me know what the, what you would like to hear about the library. I might be able to tell stories, but I'd have to change names.
You're good.
Thank you very much. Um, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
If you would reach out to me tomorrow?
Yes.
I have an idea.
You have an idea?
Yes, to help me with some things, but.
Did you get my email?
Be careful.
I, I sent you an email. Did you get it? Okay.
We'll talk.
All right.
Storage shelves?
Thank you. What?
Storage shelves, cabinets?
Perhaps. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on. Uh, Ms. Pamela, to the senior disabled services.
Good evening.
Good evening. You don't have to adjust the microphone.
No, I guess I don't. You can hear me, okay? Okay, in your packet is my two thousand two hundred and twenty-two year-end review report. We continue to offer activities of interest at the Cooperache Senior Center. We followed up expressed activity interests, and if enough were interested and signed up, we offered those new activities based on those interests. And some activities were limited or eliminated as interest and abilities to attend waxes and lanes. Also, it depends on the facilitator. We had a couple volunteer facilitators that couldn't do the tadding, baking, and yoga groups that were started, and so we had to put those on hiatus until we get other ones or they come back. We still continue with the live music on Fridays at ten fifteen to eleven fifteen. And anyone is welcome to comment. It's free admission, and we do not have age limits, so.
AM or PM?
In the morning, before lunch. So the idea is seniors can come, anyone can come and listen. But the meal site is for seniors, and that's at eleven-thirty. So music is ten fifteen to eleven fifteen. And then, um, Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, and then lunch is at eleven-thirty, so. And we continue to book groups coming in. Am vets come monthly there, meet monthly. Association of American University Women, AAUW meets there. Bible Study Fellowship, BASF meets there. Um, Life After School meets there. And sometimes we have different years, it's different classes. But we have class reunion committees that come and use the facility to plan for their class reunions. And, um, we do, we are involved with special events. Coming up is Freeze Fest. And that is the first, um, the first week, last week of this month and first week of next month is, um, I think the thirtieth and thirty-first of January. And then the first week, Friday, the third, we have Freeze Fest Bingo and Euca. And so everyone is welcome regardless of age to come down and take part. And after that, um, on that day, we're having a potluck, a Freeze Fest potluck, so. And again, everybody for those Freeze Fest activities needs a Freeze Fest button. And then Bingo is fifty cents a card, as many cards or as little cards as you want. And that money gets turned into the prizes. And, uh, Euca, no, I don't play Euca. But I, so when I say this, I understand some things but don't understand other things. Two dollars to play and ten cents a bump, whatever that means. And twenty-five cents if you go in alone and don't.
Are you from Wisconsin?
I, I played Euca when I was about eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. I haven't played it for years.
My, my, my.
Yes. So, um, and then those, those bunnies get turned in. The two dollars to play gets turned into prizes. And then the potluck, all it requires is somebody to bring a dish to pass and then the Freeze Fest button. So, um, we're looking forward to that special event. Also, this last year, we were fortunate enough, you've heard me talk about this in the past, to do fifteen interviews with WTC students who are learning how to interview people. And that was kind of a highlight, cause my seniors went into it like, yeah, I'll do it for you. And they came out of like, I'll do it next year, too. So it turned out really well. The numbers, you're always interested in numbers. This year, the total numbers of usage, um, so if somebody came to Euca, that's one time. If they came to Bingo, that's another time. So it's not people, it's usage. And so it was fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two this year. And last year, it was ten thousand seven hundred. And I should say plus after both of those numbers, cause we don't catch everybody who comes to our library. We don't catch everyone who comes to our giving closet. Those things people can just take and read and bring back, or take, um, the incontinent products or whatever, and, and go with it. So, um, educational and health programs, we continue. Technology, we, um, had some grants and amped our technology part in, in the senior center. Health programs, weigh-in scale, line dancing, wellness exercise. I think if everybody at Wellness Exercise came all at one time, we would have like a dozen and a half or so people in one class. But life is busy, and not everybody comes each, each three days a week. We started yoga, but then the volunteer instructor had to cancel for now. Pals exercise, as soon as we get six to twelve people, I will do that class again and stand up and move more. That lifestyle class, we will, um, as soon as six to twelve people sign up, we will do that, too. And I'm so happy that this year we have amped up, this last year, we amped up our office traveling, where the, um, people come in and meet with Toma people at our senior center instead of them having to travel to Sparta or wherever. And those were the ADC, ADRC dementia care specialist comes once a month. St. Cry hospice care transition coordinator comes once a month. Better Hearing has been coming forever, once a month. And, um, when she can, Officer Delaney Hannah-Ran comes, um, once a month and meets with people, which is a police, uh, department initiative. And this month, next week for the first time, Stephanie, she's the, um, Monroe County ADR, health and wellness specialist, will be coming once a month. So we're very happy with that. And I have been getting calls, a lot of calls lately, for the tax assist that's coming up. We started that last, this is going in and out, I think, or I'm moving a lot, one or the other. So we started that last year, and our own Kitty Geneva Co. is one of the, is the main mover and shaker behind that that does it. So, um, we're excited about that. We have right now a volat- a college volunteer that helped us with the printer and the new dedicated laptop for that. So he helped us today get that going. Because neither Kitty nor I are very good at IT things. And, um, we did educational and health programs, nutrition speakers, Medicare listening session with the legislators, um, last year, Take the Mystery Out of Medicare, Trim Healthy Mama. Uh, Health Traditions, Ending Coverage by Alice Ackerman, the ADRC, um, Elder Benefit Specialist. Training from our own, um, ambulance service on ED use and life-saving techniques. And the flu vaccine clinic that was at our place two days. SER fifty-five Training with Compensation Program came and spoke. Open enrollment options with Alice Ackerman. And Medicare Drug Plan Open Enrollment Options, which is a different thing than that one. And that was also by Alice Ackerman. She is a hidden jewel of Monroe County for information and guidance. And then in disabled and special needs services, we have the Special Needs Committee. Life After School Program comes Sunday-Funday. We event once a month, we do. And the prom dresses are now at the, um, senior center, and we're taking care of those. And then we added Ms. Anna Hartley's, um, Special Education Class comes. They started in December coming, and they're learning life skills during their class, as in cleaning and, and interacting with other people and those kinds of things. So that's, that's also good. And there's somebody who just loves working, Aunt Murray's, that comes for that. Throughout the year, volunteers assist with daily and monthly activities and special events. We add them as we need them with activities. And, uh, in this year, we had one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four volunteer opportunities that were taken. Last year, it was eight hundred and seventy-six. So that is also growing. People are feeling comfortable and coming in and taking part in responsibility. PR, we still give tours. I get lots and lots of calls that I, I call them referral calls, that I refer them out to programs or, or special help. I really try to work on communication, on getting the word out on the senior center, and I do that by the newsletter. The Toma Senior Center Facebook. And I have to get better, but I, I do some, but I have to get better with the city website and, um, working with the chamber to get more information out. I'm involved in community, in, yeah, active, uh, community organizations, which help get the word out. And my, and I'm involved in professional community involvement, Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And I was, um, appointed or, um, started serving on Wisconsin State Aging Advisory Council. And, um, I'm also connected with the National Council on Aging and National Institute for Senior Centers. So we can get those information from those organizations and their expertise. Building and maintenance, uh, we've talked a lot in the past about the buildings and what's there. And I'm kind of excited about, uh, possible pro, uh, possible projects coming up. We'll have to see what happens. We have rented the housing unit, the apartment, Morgan Stanley, the kitchen, and four offices on the upstairs. I think that's it. And I'm really hesitant at this point in the game. I'm still entertaining offers or look, look to see Phillips Pharmacy building for rent. But depending on what we do, whether we go ahead with projects, whether you guys decide to do that or not, I don't want somebody to put some money into fixing it up, and then we used to ask them to move out in a, you know, this, in a couple months or six months or whatever. So we'll see what happens. Income budget, we're, we still are doing the fundraiser projects. Uh, our two big projects, um, are the Crazy Days Lunch Fundraiser and then in August and November, Arts and Craft Fair. And, um, we also get donations throughout the year and in memory and other, and grants, local grants mostly. We work with, uh, ADRC of Monroe County for the meal site. They now, starting this, this, starting in twenty-twenty-two, they have three routes out instead of two routes for the homebound. And each route is about twenty people. There's always a waiting list for those routes. And that they're limited to about twenty people because of the viability of the hot food and cold food for each route. So, um, but we were two routes and now we're three routes. So that's sixty-some people. And then the in-house eating, the lunch bunch at the senior center.
How many is that?
All of that varies greatly.
But I mean, does, dozen?
They had eight people at one table today, and I think six people on another table today. And last week, one day, we had four of us. It just depends on what's on the menu and what the weather's like and what's happening out there in community events or health-related things or other things going on.
So four to one?
Yeah, yeah. I'm involved in regular meetings as in city council right now. Those are listed in there. I try to get as much, I try to take advantage of educational opportunities. Those are also listed in the report. And the big project that we, um, embarked on that we're really hitting the books now is the, uh, Wisconsin Association of Senior Center, Centers Accredi- Accredi- I can't say it now.
Accreditation.
Thank you, um, process. And that will be quite throughout the year.
I should, I said it wrong. Accreditation.
Thank you. We just had our Zoom meeting for our region that is, we're embarking on that together as a region at our different, uh, senior centers. And we just had that, and so we're kind of, okay, let's go on that. Any questions? There's more information in here. I just hit the highlights for that. I'm sorry I'm taking so long, but it's the year-end report. And, um, the goals are enlisted in there for twenty-twenty-three. And I did talk about those last month, I believe. We added a few things other, from other years to that, but I, I did talk about that. Any questions?
I have a question for you, Pam. Have you ever heard of Papa Pale?
Papa?
Pale.
Pale? No.
Last week, I was out, out and about and ran into a friend and, and they mentioned Papa Pale, and it's an app that you can download. Well, that's why I never heard of it. And it's actually kind of amazing, cause I actually downloaded it myself to figure it out. But, um, it's for seniors, uh, anybody that has a developmental disability or any type of disability, and they, I'm not sure how it works or how they sign up for it. But it's to reach out to the community so people can go, you know, if they wanted to go sit with someone, or if they wanted to go read the newspaper to someone, they could sign up. It's like a, they go on a thirty-minute block, a sixty-minute block, and a ninety-minute block. And it provides more or less companionship for that time. And I just thought, you see, it, it's mostly in the bigger cities. And I just thought, you see, it's mostly in the bigger cities. And it's not so much in the smaller communities. But I think that might be another tool and toolbox eventually.
Okay. I'll see it. I don't do apps, but I'll see when I can do the work. Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay, Christina, the Chamber and Visitors Bureau.
Do you want to do Shane first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Planning and Building Inspection. I'll do Shane first.
Hey, everybody.
I was just too excited to get to Tina.
Yeah, I'm an understudy. So we've got Casey and myself, December code enforcement, belly permit reports. Nobody's got any questions on those. I got a couple other things I can touch base on. Okay. Secondly, I will provide a 2022 year-end report. And typically what I'll do is I'll provide the last two years. That way it gives you guys a chance to determine with permits, construction value, things of that nature, at least a two-year window. And I would like to invite, I know I've expressed this before, the council members. Spring is right around the corner. And between Casey and myself, we're going to be targeting dilapidated buildings, sheds, things of that nature. I'm more of a proactive enforcement. But I would still like to have the council persons drive their district's, maybe come up with a list of specific properties or even specific types of items you guys want to address. Because again, the more eyes, the better. And that's something that we want to concentrate our efforts in the spring on. So if you guys start having some thoughts on, on your districts and things that you're aware of, please give that to us. Again, we'd like to step up that proactive enforcement, especially for Casey on her end, so. And the owner thing I want to touch base with and Sean had reached out to me regarding a property on 104 Clark Street. I'll tell you what's different during the past F1, it's right on the corner by Axle Pack there. It's a dilapidated building, the hole's in the roof. And I will be condemning that next week. And the reason I had kind of held off on that is the owner and co-owners have all passed away within the last two years. So when we follow up with the condemnation process, if the owner doesn't do the actual demolition of the building itself, themselves, then we are responsible to do that. So best case scenario is always that the property owner takes care of that. In this particular case, you know, I'm not sure what happened with their estate, but they're still shown as owners almost two years after they passed away. So we can't wait any longer for them to get it condemned and if we have to fight the money to do the demolition in the spring, then we'll have to do that and try to recoup that, do a special assessment on the property, so. But if anyone else is aware of that property, yes, I, that has been on the radar and we've kind of waited for, hopefully, a new owner to take over on that. But it just never seemed to happen, so.
Is that everything for you, sir?
Yep.
Okay, Richard?
Any timeline on when the last fire building, fire damage building's coming down?
Tim had stated that they're going to be doing some training in there. I, I know that they're going to be tearing it down. I did talk to Dale Crowbridge, within the last two weeks here. I think it's just a matter of getting it scheduled, Richard, on their end, with a contractor.
Sounds like it's going to be a couple months yet. Real quick, I don't, I don't want to speak out and turn on Dale's behalf, but I talked to him last night and they actually, insurance companies got to go back in and do a revalidation of things again, the way it sounds. And he said he was actually in contact with somebody that may be interested in picking up the south side of that home and moving it.
Really?
So, don't, don't know. That's what he told me last night, so don't know if that's going to happen.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Shane. We'll move to Christina. And Tim, thank you for moving the microphone up so Tina doesn't have to.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Kirk had already mentioned our annual banquet again last Monday in February. We still have room available, but we're expecting to sell between three and three hundred and fifty. We're bringing entertainment back, and some of you may remember this. But ten years ago, we had our fiftieth annual banquet and we had a really great comedian called C. Willie Miles. And we're bringing him back for our sixtieth, but really good feedback on him. So I'm anticipating really good entertainment again. And he kind of specializes in some of that Midwest humor, but not the same way Charlie Baroness does. It's more of making fun of our, our weather and some of our customs and that kind of thing. So it should be a great time if you're able to come. We'd love to have you. Went around with Joe Prost today to determine where our display signs were going to go up. And I think he's communicating that with your crew. We got them much later than we anticipated last year, so it was kind of too late for us to get them up. So we're starting on that much earlier this year. We've booked a couple bands for downtown Thursday nights, working with, the police department's working on getting the road traffic rerouted for us. And then we'll probably have permits for you by next, or permit applications, excuse me, for you on that for next month. We did have a small issue with our building this week with some water coming onto my desk from the ceiling. So talked with Kirk on that and we're able to kind of get some of that repaired. And we'll have some drywall and small structure things to repair on that, but getting that corrected. So thank you again for your help, Kirk. Otherwise, our area guides are scheduled to be on time this year, so kind of excited about that project. We're just nearing completion and we'll get that to print fairly soon here. Again, we'll be distributing those all throughout town as well as the Ninety-Ninety-Four Corridor as well as Fort McQuaidville Field, those kind of things. So, any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, move on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from December twentieth, 2022, December thirty-first, 2022 cash and investments reports, the special beer permit application for the Toma Warren Sportsman's Alliance for TWSA Ice Fishery on Saturday, February eleventh, 2023, the second-hand article and jewelry dealer license application for Eco ATM LLC of Toma, the Lake Toma Youth Snowmobile Races for the Warrens WIKCR Northeast Club on Saturday, February twenty-fifth, 2023, and the application of Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage license for Brick Sip House.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mitch, a second from Sean. Any discussion?
Hi.
Hi. If I may?
You may.
Okay. It was brought to my attention just today, actually, that the, we still don't have a complete inspection from the Fire and Police Department for the, the alcohol license, yep, for the Brick Sip House. And I was just wondering if the.
I'm in my motion to allow you to approve this once they have that confirmed.
Okay, that would be wonderful. That's okay. And then the other one is, and it was mentioned last night about the insurance requirements for the races on the ice. If we could have that motion include that pending the insurance as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee of the whole, entertain a motion regarding the resolution supporting Wisconsin Public Service Commission consideration of the City of Toma's Energy Innovation Grant Application.
No, approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Adam, a second from Nellie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion for the resolution for payment of monthly bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Sean, second from Lamont. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion for Central Square Records Management System Migration for the Toma Police Department. We have a motion from Mitch and a second from John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Dean, second from Nellie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Ms. Irma, don't leave.